Any person may speak for up to three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, is not arrayed in today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Total time allotted for citizen's input will be 15 minutes. Speakers are requested to complete a simple form giving name, address, and subject available to community development department's office prior to non-need-to-do. All right, so our 9:05 is a public hearing in consideration of a major use permit UP 16-02, lot line adjustment LLA 16-08, and grading permit GR 16-004, based on FEIR, on the FEIR. The project applicant is Wild Diamond Vineyards LLC proposing a 52,800 case per year winery, with tasting room, and up to 35 special events per year. Moving plus or minus 2.87 acres from APN 01306011 to APN 01306010, and grading of 80 acres for vineyards. The project is located at 15015, 15087, 15375, 15591, 15563, and 15807 Spruce Grove Road, Middletown, and further described as APN 01306004, 0709, 1011, and 12. The certification of the FEIR is under appeal, and therefore, any action on the major use permit, lot line adjustment, and grading permit will be subject to the results of the appeal. Boarding.
Joshua Doris has prepared a report of presentation.
Okay, great. That's the project site. Can't see it real well, but here's 29. Come along here, Hidden Valley Lake subdivision, we've got Spruce Grove Road, someone up around here. And basically, to reiterate, the applications you'd be considering today are the major use permit, lot line adjustment, and a grading permit. And as Chairman just indicated, the relay matter is a certified EIR, and the appeal was filed on that, so all of today's decisions is contingent upon the board supervisor's decision on this, this EIR. And here's the proposed site layout. We have the site, there's the proposed tasting room is here, lot line adjustment would occur here to, so this, the proposed tasting room would meet the setbacks. Here's the proposed winery. Here's Spruce Grove Road, here's the entrance, and here's the proposed interpretive kiosk and detective center. And the site profile, it's approximately 323 acres. It's zoned RL rural lounge, which allowed by right vineyards, agricultural uses, which in this case vineyards, and allows with a major use permit. Basically, large wineries exceeding 15,000 cases of a year, along with special events with amplified outdoor sound, unlimited amount of events per year with up to 200 people per event. So that's basically the RL permits with the use permit. And with our use permit, staff has made the, there's six, six findings that must be made for a major use permit, and described in depth in the staff report, however, I'll just touch base on a few of them. Basically, the first one is that the establishment, maintenance, or operation that you supply for will not, in this particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed uses, or be detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the county. And since the project has been altered and scaled down somewhat since the initial proposal, and one item that's changed is limiting hours for special events, which some special events will start at 11:00 and end by 10:00 p.m., so there should not be any noise, noise conflicts. They're also going to coordinate Six Sigma Winery, which they also have an event center, so that, so that the events don't start at the same time, they'll be staggered and allow reduce any potential congestion. They're going to install drought roads along their avenues inside to basically mitigate any dust, potential dust impacts. Clear the vegetation after project entry to make it safe for folks exiting and entering. And in addition to those, there's nine mitigation measures also to address, address potential detriments to the county. And under this, the use permit, there's two types of special events. One is non-promotional events, which basically, they could open up their tasting room for private parties, weddings, what have you. They're proposing to have 10, 10 of those events, and then the remaining 25 events, they're proposing to have as promotional events, which have to do with wine, agriculture, tourism of the county, and so forth. As it's described in, described in depth in the staff report. And in the second finding that must be made is that the site for the project is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics. And the proposed use would occur on about 90 acres of the 323, so there's fairly, there's adequate room to accommodate the proposed uses. And the topography where the events are to be located is fairly gentle and flat, so there's not, there's not going to be a lot of, you know, rearranging the contours of the site. And the finding number three that must be made, that the streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the proposed uses, and there's a traffic study which indicated that it would maintain a level of service at Spruce Grove Road and Highway 29 would not exceed the county's projected and, projected level of service, and additionally, the Department of Public Works, the County Department of Public Works reviewed the traffic study as well, and found there's no issues with that, and that the roads are safe, can safely accommodate the proposed, the proposed traffic. And finding four, is that there's adequate public safety, limited fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, and police protection, and its environmental health analysis, and the site is sufficient for expanded septic system. We've also incorporated a condition where they have to have a certain amount of toilets for guests to again accommodate for public safety. And adequate water supply, we've developed five conditions of approval as well related to ensuring that the sustainable water supply is sustainable for the proposed use. And finding number five that must be made is that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of the code, the general plan, any zoning or land area plans, and as I stated before, it's zoned RL, which permits with a major use permit, you know, large wineries as well, special events with amplified outdoor sound. And I believe that about summarizes, summarizes my presentation. Recommended actions, basically, staff recommended, so approved use permit, lot line adjustment, and grading permit applications contingent upon the EIR. Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I'll open this up for public input. If you'd like to speak on this matter, please step forward, state and sign your name on the form on the panel there.
I live in Hidden Valley Lake, about half mile from the vineyard that the proposed home. And I have written extensive comment that you should have, and I won't read the whole I am concerned that, I saw in the public notice for today's hearing that it said that any future court action might only cover issues that were raised today, and many people have given detailed criticisms and recommendations as part of the EIR process. For example, Steve Greenberg looked very closely at the noise or the sound study and gave a presentation, and I want to make sure that those comments and recommendations are not lost to the public record. That's a part of the county's permitting process, so I'd like to invoke the whole record on the Wild Diamond projects and its various iterations, including the original 24 grading permit record, so that we don't have to present all that today. And if it's possible, I'd like to know that I've accomplished something by saying that.
The entire record of what happened in the last few meetings will be part of the public record. I'm not sure what it is you want to accomplish. You want to bring that public record into this, this meeting?
Right. I, I don't entirely understand what's happened. The, there's been a bifurcation of two processes. One is the environmental impact report process, and the other's the county's permitting process. So, you know, we've been discussing potential impacts on the environment and on residents for a long time, you know, going back to December of 2014. And when you, when I read that in the notice in the paper, that, the paper, that the only thing that can be considered if, if today's decisions are taken to court are things that are raised today, I'm concerned. I'm particularly concerned because processes have been put in place in the past where record, where public comment got, got lost to the public record, and got made irrelevant to the process by bureaucratic legal maneuvers. And I, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, I can't follow all that's gone on, but I am concerned that by splitting the process, that we're, we're losing things that we brought out.
So you're referring to the, the appeal to the FEIR that you, that was done to the board supervisors for that portion of it? So that's already on appeal? So we're not going to discuss that today, because that's on appeal to board supervisors? So what we're dealing with today is the use permit and lot line adjustment, and so we're going to, and one other thing anyway. So we're making a decision on that today, and then that will join, once it is approved, then it will move forward also, and then there could be an appeal on that, a separate appeal.
But my fear is, my fear is that if we went to appeal things that happened today, that it would be possible to respond to us by saying, "You didn't raise that issue on that particular day, so, so, you know, the fact that you had a noise expert give a detailed presentation, now, well, that was part of the EFEIR, and we, we made all the, the things that relate to your concern a condition on the use permit, and then rather than a mitigation through the EIR process, so now you're out of luck."
Mr. Chairman, the county council can correct me if I'm wrong, but on the appeal, it is a delug, a delugal, a delugal process. And so, everything is new. Everything has got to be presented on the, at the appeal. It's not the, all the discussion testimony prior to that. So if you're concerned, all your, if you have experts, if you have witnesses, if you have documentation, that all has to be filed at, at time with the board supervisors to consider the appeal.
Well, and also, I just wanted to, to say that these particular items that are on today are, are being looked at contingent on the appeal that's going forward on the final EIR. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it's not, it's not as if everything that's happened before ceases to exist.
Yeah, I hear people responding to what needs to happen for the appeal, but I'm particularly concerned about what needs to happen today, because the notice in the paper suggested that if things weren't raised today, that they would be lost to this process that we're engaged in today.
Mr. Chair, I'll attempt to clearly do. It's not a shell game. We're not trying to pull anything fast, cover your eyes, and put something behind your back. You have already appealed, or somebody has already appealed, the decision that was made at the last hearing on Wild Diamond. Okay? That is still pending and is in front of the board supervisors. When we get done today with this part of it, this will be added to what you already have under appeal, and the board supervisors will look the entire package, make a decision, and then we'll go on from there. So we're not taking all the stuff that's gone before and throwing it in a box and throwing it on a shelf somewhere. This will all be joined together, it'll all be handled as one matter by the board supervisors, and then possibly by a court if it goes on from there. Okay? So anything that's said today will be part of the record for today, it'll be joined in with the record from the last meeting, and all the meetings before, and everybody that's had a chance to speak will have their words documented in the file. So nothing's going to be lost, nothing's going to be thrown away, and all the testimony that we've received as a body here will be one part, one, one box, I mean, one, one full unit, okay? And that's what's going to be heard by the board supervisors.
So the two processes will come back together as one?
Correct.
And, and, okay?
Yeah, the two processes will come back together only if, if action today is appealed. If it's not appealed, and the action today is not, would not be considered by the board supervisors.
Correct. But it would, it's still, when it's all done, it'll be back together in one big file, and it'll be stored away somewhere, so that the, the record will be intact for all proceedings regarding this EIR and the winery vineyard project.
Because it has, it has already happened to us, that comments that were made at a public meeting are no longer part of the record, that...
I would have to have you show, yeah, what you're talking about, just...
It was that March 31 scoping meeting.
Anything that this body has heard will be included in that file. All the letters that have been submitted, all the testimony that's been given, it'll all be put together.
So, yeah, two things happened that I can think of off, off the top of my head. One is that the March 31 scoping meeting, the public comments there are no longer part of the record.
Where was that at?
It was in Middletown, at a convenient time.
Okay, but that's not, that's not before this body, so I can't speak on that, but you may talk to staff and see where the minutes are from that meeting, and make sure that they're...
I, I know where they are. They're at the court recording service hired by Wild Diamond, but Audrey Knight got up and said that we didn't need to worry about taking notes or making our own record, because it was all being recorded by a court reporter.
Okay, that can be addressed through staff, but that's, that's, that's an item that did not happen before the planning commission.
Okay, another example is that David Adam wrote a letter as part of the, you know, preliminary part of the DEIR, and then when he resubmitted that letter, as part of his comments on the, on the DEIR, along with an additional letter, when it came to the previous letter, the one before the DEIR was written, the response in the EIR was, "Oh, this was already included, so we don't have to respond to it." So that, you know, it's, that we've been burned in the past, that I'm concerned now that we're not losing work that we've done to the public record that could be used in future court actions. So that's why I'm, why I'm bringing it up, is it's not just a theoretical field.
Okay, I've tried to explain it, and I can't go any further, so.
And also, just on a point of process, I was not able to get the staff report for this meeting until last Friday, even though in the paper it said it would be available on, I think, the 31st of October, so it was delayed, I understand, staff is busy, but it's, it's hard to work on this, on this end with what I'm trying to accomplish, when it's just hard to get the basic information in a timely fashion, and that's been a repeated issue also.
I didn't get mine until Saturday, and they all took...
Okay. Okay, um, I'm wondering, Sasha, if you could flip up the map of...
This one, or...
Yeah, can you put that up?
Yep.
Okay, so the environmental impact report process, government and state, has been split off from the county's process, and while the EIR is under appeal, the county, in my opinion, is proceeding rather prematurely, throwing in a set of hydrology and water quality mitigations that were written in the final days before acceptance of the EIR, intended for inclusion in it, and then not included, but reclassified as conditions for the use permit at the last minute. These measures, while an important step in the right direction, are too little, too late, regardless of how they are labeled. The new conditions were not written by a hydrologist as they should be, but by Mr. Mazzarelli, with possible help from supervisor constab. The conditions include a measure that should have been completed long ago, both prior to the publication of the draft EIR, and prior to the drafting of actual mitigations and conditions. The measure, Hydrology Water Quality 1, calls for mapping of the springs, water bodies, and wetlands on the subject property. Geologist David Adam has talked himself blue in the face, requesting this mapping be completed not just for Wild Diamond Vineyard land, but for the entire impacted area. As recommended by Dr. Adam, if it were done as recommended by Dr. Adam, the mapping would be an important, information-rich part of a hydrology study. Dr. Adam has repeatedly called particular attention to the springs located above and feeding the reservoir known as Hidden Valley Lake. Hydrologist Matt Hageman has seconded Dr. Adam's opinion and expanded upon his recommendations. The reason given for not doing this was that it was impossible to map water features on private property. So in my frustration, I, I've set out through social media to try to do some of this work So we've produced a map of springs and seeps in the Hidden Valley Lake area. We were able to verify 13 springs and seeps, and noted five potential additional ones, which compares with a total of three water features of unknown origin, which were mentioned in our perfunctory site visit by a Wild Diamond Vineyard consultant. Most of the springs and seeps we identified are upstream from the reservoir, which in turn is upstream from the drinking water source for the community, which is under Puda Creek, or for, for Puda Creek, which is sort of the underlying water table, regional water table, whereas our concern is that what Wild Diamond is drawing from is a perched water table which feeds these springs that run down into Hidden Valley Lake. So most of the seeps and springs are either in parks or other common areas, visible from the street, long known to local residents, and/or visible from satellite data. The map would seem to be consistent with that theory denied by Wild Diamond consultant Mark Cheney, also not a hydrologist, that Wild Diamond land sits over a perched water table that leaches out along the edges, where geologic layers intersect hillsides. For example, a distinct line of springs forms at about 1,500 feet in altitude. So this is kind of an incomplete data set. You can see Wild Diamond marked with the orange circles, currently cleared land, the area where they're explaining, planning to expand, next to Eagle Rock Road is number two, and their access to the land is number three. And I will say also, just because people who are here that could mention this maybe to the owners, I feel a lot of calls that they're accessing it up through the Hidden Valley Lake community, and our roads are not designed for heavy trucks, heavy equipment coming up through Eagle Rock Road. We did, so, you know, we, this is kind of an incomplete data set, because it is really just area in the community of Hidden Valley Lake, or immediately outside it. If you could go to the topo map. So if you see 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, they all fall right along the same altitude, and I suspect that if we were to go on down Spruce Grove Road, you, and, you know, in between Spruce Grove Road and that, that 1,600-foot marker line, that we would find more. Number three is sort of along that line also, and I wasn't able to verify that, because it is on private property. But the few private property owners that I did contact about this were happy to provide access to their land. These are people who have water resources that they're going to be motivated to protect, so I think that they would be on board with trying to get some baseline monitoring on flow rates, water quality, and be amenable to some ongoing monitoring, such as that is, that's been suggested by Dr. Adam and by Matt Hageman. So I guess that's all I want to say about this. I, I just feel that these are kind of weak excuses that are being given for not doing things that are not that difficult. There's a, a naturalist who lives in our neighborhood who was able just to walk me directly to all these springs, you know, basically in a couple of days. I'd also like to bring up advanced pesticide spray notice, which has had the same reason given for it being impossible, and it's just too hard. We suggested a long time back, including the March 31 scoping meeting, that there be an email list that residents could join at their discretion. It would be nice to have an option of a robo-call or a text message, but very simple to send an email out to people who have put themselves on a list. But Tina Wallace, the attorney for Wild Diamond, had added the idea that it had to be an affirmative notification that would require Wild Diamond to notify all residents, require Wild Diamond to keep track of changing tendencies, home sales, and then having sort of set up this stramian, she rejected it as too difficult. Now, the planning division has claimed that it is... that it is somehow prohibited from adding a requirement for notification because the agricultural commissioner is charged with enforcement of pesticide regulations. However, enforcement is different from drafting conditions. He's not in charge of making the laws or setting the conditions for use permit. And it seems like he's been given a tremendous amount of power in this process. I'm glad that Wild Diamond has said that they will post notification on their website, but that would be a voluntary measure. It wouldn't be enforceable. And it would also require residents to check the site every day to stay informed. So, you know, for, to get one day's worth of information about springing would probably require you to be getting up every morning for seven days to check the website. Whereas if you could just check your email, which you're doing routinely anyway, and have an email saying that it was happening, it would be less of a burden on the residents and a simple way of protecting health, which is one of the requirements that Joshua Doris mentioned. It's the planning commission's job to protect our health and welfare. And this would be a pretty simple health and welfare. And this would be a pretty simple measure for doing that, given the obvious technical expertise that's at the disposal of the applicant. So just to sum up, things that the planning commission could do today if it wanted to. It could consult a hydrologist to add conditions that would expand hydrology requirements to ensure protection of water supply and water quality in the reservoir known as Hidden Valley Lake, as well as downstream. And also for neighboring residents outside the community of Hidden Valley Lake who rely on wells and who have already reported to you that they are having problems with their water supply. It could require cover crops, which provide a host of environmental advantages. It could require terracing on steep slopes to prevent erosion and conserve water. In order to address the threat of pesticide drift, it could require not just advanced spray notification, but a green barrier and at least the 300-foot buffer zone that you approved once upon a time for an earlier and actually smaller version of this project. It could require vegetation to be chipped or hulled rather than burned for better air quality. It could require improvements on Spruce Grove Road to address traffic congestion and safety. And I heard it said earlier today that road conditions would be maintained to some level, but I would like to know what level that is. Bob Mazzarelli spoke last time about potential degradation to even level E or F. I don't think that's planned for this project, but I'd like to know what is planned because he did talk about degradation. It could require that, the planning commission could require that amplified music be kept indoors and the farm machinery not be run all night in close proximity to people's homes, as people have complained about. It could require wildlife corridors or at least islands of habitat preservation. It could set up a consolidated complaint system rather than requiring residents to negotiate a maze of responsible departments and agencies. In short, it could send a message to the people of Lake County that they and the environment they live in matter as much as money, interests, and a little tax revenue. Thanks very much.
Please do.
Good morning, this is John Clay from Hidden Valley.
There's a yellow form, I think, in the thing next to there.
Is it, is it kind of big and cheap?
Change it up on the end.
Okay. Any rate, I'm from Hidden Valley. I actually have a question about procedure. When she mentioned that the notice in the paper gave a date, and then Bob mentioned, well, he didn't get news till a day later and all that, I don't know if Bob is in charge of that now, but that is something that is really grievous. And there should be some simple control on that because when something is published in the paper, which I know is required, that makes it difficult for you guys as well as the public. That's just a comment. Then I have a question on the appeal. I know, I understand critically about the appeal to the Board of Supervisors. But the way I'm reading this and what you said, depending upon, of course, your decision today, that would have to be a separate appeal, is that what I heard? But that seems very unfair to me when it's being piggybacked with that appeal up there. I mean, I know what an appeal costs, and I think that's, has that ever been looked at differently, Bob? The appeal, I mean, it's like, either that or why did we have this today before the appeal? I just think it's double jeopardy on Hidden Valley for money. Any questions? That's my comments.
Thank you.
On that subject, I, Elizabeth Montgomery, can? Just on that subject, I want to be clear. We put out $400-something to appeal first the original project. That, you know, is over a year ago now. We never got that money back. The appeal was never scheduled with the Board of Supervisors. We've been told we shouldn't get that money back because if this process falls apart, they could go back and use that money and not use that application. Then we paid $500-some to appeal the F E I R. And now we're looking at an additional $500 to appeal today's decision. So, you know, it's somewhere upward of $1,400 just to keep the balls in the air. And it is a hardship. I'm on disability. It's a tremendous hardship.
Thank you. Anybody else speak on this matter?
Okay.
I'll close the whole agenda period and bring it back up to you.
Would you determine that the applicant does have a response to me? But I'd like to respond to a couple things because on the applicant, I will respond to what I respond to.
Okay.
Elizabeth Montgomery, you send her letter, and she makes a lot of comments in here. In dealing with the hydrology and geology, I will admit I am not a geologist or geologist. However, I was a water resource director for the Department of Florida, in which I worked with the United States Geological Survey developing a computer model for the essential Florida region. I was responsible for a monitoring well network throughout the county. I was also responsible for a well inventory. And we had over 20,000 wells in the inventory. I was the executive director of a water supply authority in which I participated in several well drilling programs and a several aquifer performance tests and several groundwater modeling. I had a permit that, a water use permit that went to administrative hearing. It was the longest administrative hearing in the history of the Water Management District. Lasted five weeks. I was on the witness stand for a week. It was a battle of the computer modelers and tried to determine which had the best model. And I had to interact with the modelers, the geologists, hydrologists, biologists and everything on the impacts of the project on the water resource in the area. After that, I was a part owner and vice president of a consulting firm which specialized in groundwater modeling. And I was the person interpreting the work that the modelers and the engineers did so the layman could understand what we were doing. So yes, I am not a hydrologist, but I've done so much work with them. I understand the principles and things like that. One of the things that I've been working on in the department is, to put the planning division, is change how we do our reports, use the new staff report format. Next week, we have a new principal planner coming in work, which will handle long-range planning and environmental planning, sequel plans. And as was pointed out at the last hearing, there is a difference between mitigation and conditions. And that's one of the, previously the department had all the conditions as part of the mitigation. And over the last few weeks, we now have changed in that process. And you can see that the initial study reports will have a different format. We're focusing on the mitigation, and then the conditions will be much more detailed. This was a case where I was trying to get the, what I had put in as conditions, change that to mitigation and put it in the conditions. So that's, nothing being done underhand, nothing, I'm not trying to pull a fast one, I'm just moving it to the other areas. The applicant has made comments and suggestions on how to change those conditions. And with a couple minor changes, I do not recommend those changes as requested by the applicant. For example, they indicate that if the monitoring for one year doesn't show any, the impacts are negligible, you can just continue to run the water monitoring. Now, I want to open that. There's seasonal differences, there's changes in pumping rates, there's all sorts of factors which may affect that. So my recommendation is to leave it open ended. And if after a certain time, we have a good understanding of what's going on here, that can be modified. There's nothing to prevent that from being modified. They pointed out in their letters that the production wells are wells 2 and 3, and I had those as monitoring wells, wells 3 and 4. So on a screen here, they recommended changes just to two of the paragraphs. And the residents specifying that a well is 10 feet and 100 feet away, that there have been no two monster wells constructed to assess the groundwater drawdowns on the impact of wells 2 and 3. The reason the 10 and 100-foot, and talking with the hydrologists, that it depends on the geological situation, depends on the location of the well and all other factors, that you don't know exactly where those should be. And so the, or requiring a monitoring plan that the county locates the monitoring wells and the methodology that will be used. And that the monitoring program be submitted to and approved by the county prior to the operation of well number 2 as a production well. Well number 3 is already a production well. It's already being used. So before they can expand the use, it happens to be this monitoring program for the entire area. We feel that that monitoring program will provide the protection and the information we need of how the wells impact the surrounding area and environment. At the monitoring, this is a recommendation of the applicant that it be conducted with a California professional engineer, a professional geologist, I thought that was an oversight, an excellent recommendation. And they put a December 1 deadline for each report, if that was appropriate, and things like that. So we have taken some of the recommendations from the applicant, but many of them we recommend not to incorporate. The issue, Mr. Montgomery brings up the, all the springs in the surrounding area. Unfortunately, I don't think we can require the applicant to go on private property to monitor. And that's why you do the monitoring of the wells and the drawdowns to project if it's impacted. That's the best we could do at this point. There was a question about level of service. If I left the impressions that the level of service is going to drop down to E or F, absolutely not. The indication is that it's going to be A or borderline A. It's going to be essentially the same traffic flow. The plan is, general plan, if I recall correctly, is a level of service C that we came up to before we had issues. So it's well within the general plan requirements, well within what would be acceptable. So while if you have driven the road on a regular basis, you'll notice a slight increase in traffic, it is well below any standards that we have. So we will be recommending the staff and documents as prevented with these amendments. And, and that's, that's all we have.
In, under hydrology, number one, it lists wells 3 and 4 up there also. Is that to be changed to 2 and 3?
Yeah, I'll hear. Yeah.
Working on the language, yes, it, if I scroll up, it does.
Mr. Chuck, Mr. Mazzarelli, if you need for a second, if you want to pause until he comes back.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Again, Mark Chaney with S H N Engineers wanted to go over a few comments that Commissioner Treasurer Mazzarelli had and staff regarding the use permit and getting to the other items. Most of them are just clarifications on some of the items. We have a couple of conditions we'd like to have added into the condition of approval that we discussed with the planning commission prior to, we did see them in there. Just wanted to get those in there as well. One of the things that, item A1 of the general conditions, wanted to make sure that added in for the project description was the inclusion of food and wine pairings, the commercial kitchen, and non-special events that are in the project description but weren't fully brought into that piece. It doesn't really change, just adds the full project description in there to make sure that we're talking about the same project essentially versus something different. We also have on item A, 2B, it just talks about the 25 events as being kind of a single group. And really what we have, we asked for in the application and was identified in the environmental impact report prior to this project, was we had 15 events with 80 people and then additional 10 events with up to 200 people. Instead of 25 events with 200, so. Again, it's a clarification. It doesn't really, you know, we're still having special events. We just wanted to make sure that the project was in there as we had stated before versus something a little bit different. So the, again, it was looking at 15 events with up to 80 people and then... Control Board through their small winery permit facility application process, which was previously described. So, we'd like to strike number eight if that works for the Planning Department. The conditions, I think it does it for B, wanted to look at C, item C1 regarding the noisier quality traffic transportation. As Director Masurali mentioned before, there's been confusion in terms of the county having mitigation measures in conditions of approval, including conditions of approval into mitigation measures, and they're, which were separate items under CQ for mitigation under. And we just request that in terms of having a mitigation plan developed which indicates that it's a CQ process under a condition of approval, it's been changed to a plan, a monitoring plan, as a type versus a mitigation plan. Otherwise, everything else is fine in there. It just clarifies that it's a condition of approval versus a mitigation measure under CQ, is what we're looking at. Down to item, it was, you go through C9, we'd like to add an item, C10, which would be a new condition of approval. We had offered up to the Planning Commission before, as I mentioned earlier in testimony, that the applicant liked to post on the website 24 hours prior to the spraying of chemicals on the property. And we think that for this operation, it's appropriate that it offered to do it, it brought it for Planning Commission four, and we'd like to have it as a condition of approval. And then, we'd like to add, another condition of approval was brought up for the Planning Commission at the last meeting regarding a two-year review period in terms of the condition of approval, especially related to operations of the tasting room, to make sure that there was pieces, the events, the tasting events, that the events were in compliance. The question from the Commission of Approval was that we don't want to get down the road and have, have to come back again and relook at conditions. So, we wanted to have a two-year time period for the condition to come back and have the Planning Department review the, the events that have been going on, are they in compliance, have there been significant complaints, do we have to have a modification for conditions? So, we were looking to have that included.
Is that blue of the one-year requirement?
Excuse me?
Is that blue of the one-year requirement?
Commissioner Du Carder, in our last hearing, we had mentioned a two-year, we're fine with the one-year. Whichever the Commission prefers, one year or two years, we're just trying to honor the request that was made in the last.
I thought somewhere here it said it's subject to review one year. Is that wrong?
You did not see that.
Again.
Maybe you're not. Anyway, we just wanted to bring that up in terms of, there was a review period requested, whether that's a one-year or a two-year. It was in there, we had intended to go through and, and have that as part of the process, wanted to make sure it got into the record as a condition, however that echoes whether it's a one-year or two-year, we're fine with that.
And I have one additional housekeeping measure. On condition C8 calls for the parking areas to be paved with asphalt, and the applicant intends to have a permeable surface such as a compacted aggregate base, because that is what the regional water boards prefer for recharge. So, we request that the second sentence of condition C8 be revised to allow for asphalt or another permeable surface, so that we can have groundwater recharge.
I have a question about that, because my understanding of parking lots is that they usually want the water from the parking lots to go into a collection system because of the oils and other things from vehicles, so that they do not go on downstream.
The use of permeable materials, the best management practice of approach of, if it was not to be seeping into ground, if any surface runoff, when he collected first, pre-treated before it went into a receiving body, but the, it's commonly accepted that it allows it to percolate into the ground. And, you know, if kept in a detention area, it would be percolating into the ground.
It's not the water I'm concerned about, it's what's being left by the vehicles up there. If you get somebody that's leaking oil or gasoline or something, that's going to go through the permeable surface into the.
I appreciate your concern, the best management practice is to allow it.
Okay. Just a question.
With that, we have an order, comments or questions on the use permit.
I would just add that our civil engineer, Dave Brown, from the W Association is here, he's extremely familiar with best management practices for well, and he's available, should the Commission have any questions for him.
Mr. Chairman, the items that the applicant requested, we agree with the expanded project description to apply with the episode previously. We have no problem with the definition of the, clarifying the definition of the perky by special events, that makes it easier for us to manage. On C1, the recommendation, such as the next to last line in C1, the noise monitoring and mitigation plan, the concern of dropping mitigation is, if you monitor and find there's a problem, what we do. And my suggestion is change that to monitoring and management point. So, how do you manage the noise, and how do you manage the impact? C8 regarding asphalt or permeable, just what I would add additionally, consistent with the carbon code. And what I'm specifically referring to is having handicap parking, that is required to be paved. And so, I don't want to leave the door open before we're getting away with that requirement.
The additional on C10 and C11, the, on C10, on the notification, there, you do have a letter from the Farm Bureau, the Ag Commissioner has spoken against requiring this, it does work, it could have, well, if that was to be applied universally throughout the county, it could have a significant impact on the operation of aquiferdocks, activities here. If they are voluntarily doing that, like a volunteer, that's fine. But to make it clear that we are not recommending it, the Ag Commissioner is not recommending it. There is no evidence that the Ag Commissioner's responsibility of managing pesticide application is not sufficient. If there was some evidence that the state program wasn't working, then yes, by all means, we should do something. But there's no evidence that it's not. And so, we would not be recommending such a change. The, on the C11.
What are you talking about?
We're going through some comments on the condition.
This is the pesticide notification that the applicant has voluntarily suggested as an additional condition. On the C11, the one- or two-year review, if you go with a two-year review, we would recommend that actually be at the end of one year and at the end of two years. Because I don't want to wait 24 months to do a review and say, oh, we got a problem we knew about 18 months ago. I have the record that the stage has just left, we can monitor on a regular basis. But that, again, is how you want to handle that. The other thing, based on the comments on the mitigation, item B is entitled Timing and Mitigation Monitoring. And I would recommend a change of mitigation there to conditions monitoring. Again, to be consistent with the other change, and probably just trying to, so, that those are our comments on the.
So, you do not want 10 added, and the review period, you might go to stay at one year.
The 10, we would not be recommending it. If they voluntarily.
Yeah, they want what they want.
They can, yeah. And if they want that as a condition, that's, we're not going to object to it, just want to make it clear, we're not recommending it.
Right.
And then for 11, the applicant talked about a two-year period, and if you go with a two-year, I just think it would be a stage thing, that at the end of one year, we're going to review it and make sure that we have any problems, that can be addressed right away.
Then that seems to be addressed in the zoning law, it's a subject to review after one year.
Again, I want to make it clear that by putting this as a condition, if you put a two-year, that we're not overriding the condition of one year in the zoning, just...
Our intent was to make sure that he got in there.
Correct.
I have a question.
I mean, because that came up from the Commission in terms of that, that you brought it up in terms of review, and we wanted to make sure that you brought it up specifically and addressed it, that somewhere it's in there, and if it's addressed by that, that is fine. We just want to make sure that somewhere in the condition of approval, there is a review after one year, so that we can address specifically any concern that comes.
So, how does that span its Michael?
Then, you know, with that, then we're fine in eliminating and withdrawing the request for C11.
So, that's what I was saying, yeah. I think that the suggestion about posting on the website should be left up to the vineyard to decide. I think it's a great idea, it would probably win them some favor with the community. If they remember to do that every time before spraying, that would be nice. But I don't, I agree with Mr. Masurali that we don't need to require that. So, I would say no to changing or adding 10, and changing 11 to 10, and making it a one-year review period. Well, I think, I think so that they know that we recognize that there's a potential for problem, and that we want to address that upfront and require one-year review for any problems that arise, noise, traffic, or whatever. Does that sound very proper?
contention upon the final environmental impact reports, final determination by the Board of CQ Advisors, I move that the EIR, which was previously prepared for Wild Diamond Vineyards LLC, does meet requirements of Section 15162A of the CQ guidelines, and that no additional environmental review needed. Prepare the following findings listed in the staff report dated October 28 and has changed at the meeting today.
All in favor of the approval of the CQ EIR, say aye.
I would also need the Planning Commission find that the lot line adjustment applied for by Wild Diamond Vineyards LLC on property located at 15015, 15087, 15375, 15591, and 15663, Spruce Grove, Milltown, does meet requirements of Section 3017 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the Planning Commission has reviewed and considered the environmental effects of this project as set forth in the EIR and the use permit be granted subject to the conditions of approval listed on staff report dated October 28, 2016, and has changed today.
All in favor of approval of the major use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Note the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period for approval of the use permit and the grading permit. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, appeals to the board supervisors provided to be filed, the appropriate forms of applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the Commission's final determination. Lot line adjustment, note that the applicant or any person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a 10 calendar day appeal period for approval of the lot line adjustment. If there's any disagreement with the Planning Commission on appeal and appeals to the board supervisors, they may file, the appropriate forms of applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the 10.